Welcome, everybody. Thank you for attending today's council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Some of.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. And a discussion. All in favor? State your name, please, and then your vote on suspending the rules. Mr. Lawrence? Lawrence, yay.
Guines, yay.
Guines, all right.
Yeah.
Tisdale, yes?
Glavin, yay.
And, all right, so for those of you at home watching this or present here, we have Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Shoemaker both attending via Internet. Okay, if the clerk would read the revision, please, to the agenda.
We're submitting item 5J, resolution authorizing renewal of meme licenses from Matrix Solutions.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. There's a motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. And a discussion. All right, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavin, yay.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. George, I didn't do that. Welcome everyone to our second meeting in October. I think we've had a pretty good October so far. And that concludes my report.
Those are the best kinds of reports, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. We have no departmental reports.
That does not conclude my report.
There's a reprise then. Go ahead.
I was gonna end this, but we do have a very special day tomorrow morning, beginning at eight o'clock. And that's the ribbon cutting at a long awaited Rousas. And there'll be a ceremony, and it will be open for business at eight o'clock. At eleven, the groundbreaking for the Pops Ferry Extension, two very important events, the beginning of a new, new stage in development in that part of the city. So we're very excited and we want everyone in TV land and, I guess, Internet world to attend. I think it'd be very exciting. Eight o'clock at Rousas and eleven o'clock, right behind Walgreens, towards the edge of the Pops Ferry Boulevard, north of the, south of the pass road for the ribbon cutting and groundbreaking. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We come to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Can you hear me, Paul?
Say again, George?
Paul.
All right, that's better. Go ahead.
So you can hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. First of all, I'd like to send our condolences to Chief Miller, his wife passed away. And I'd like to close the meeting in honor of Chief Miller's wife. So that's the first thing. The second thing, I think the cruise and the event went well. You might, you might have a few complaints here and there, but I tell you, ninety-eight percent of the people had a great time. And it's a great event for Biloxi. How we can thank Woody Bailey, I really don't know. He brings to the coast is amazing. That is unbelievable. An off-season like that, to bring that many people to the coast. And especially to Biloxi. And the second thing, on its, I talked to Peter earlier, on table number twenty-three point two point one, on the plan development, only the city council could make a decision on that. Nobody can give a variance other than the city council. So I need to hear that verified by Peter. And also called Carrie to look up the thing, so we can pass that information on her about it. But what happened with that variance, Land and Zoning Committee had no authority to do that. Only the city council could do that. So I tried to explain, so we need to straighten that up. Tried to explain that to everybody two weeks ago. But that, that's the rule. And that's what we need to follow, the rules and regulations of the city. To make sure we're doing these things the right way. So both of those things need to be looked at again, the one on the beach and also the one on, across on the Blake. To make sure we follow the proper rules and regulations to put these things into effect.
And Councilman, I told you, I got this
Thank you.
Right before the meeting, and I'll look at that and I'll report back to you on that next week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you, Mr. Ray Biden. Mr. Guines, anything?
Yes, same thing. I would like to extend my deepest sympathy to the chief and his family. He's in our prayers. And the only other thing I have is concerning Henry Beck Park, I'd just like to let Assistant Chief know that, you know, that there's some, I know we got operating hours, and I've been receiving a few complaints about after the hours, a lot of people there. So if they can just make some passes through after closing hours, and I think that's like at six thirty, seven o'clock at night, just kind of keep that in mind. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
I too want to express my condolences to Chief Miller. My heart breaks for him. It's awful and definitely will be in my prayers. I want to announce that we're having a Ward Three meeting tonight at Donald Snyder at five thirty. But will you go ahead and give us an update on the Broadwater property before then?
We will.
You got anything to update?
You know, just trying to make progress every day with regard to the movement and discovery of where people are finding themselves. And, you know, just, just doing what we can do to, you know, find a better way for some of these folks instead of stacking up where they wind up in places we don't know and imagine they'll be. But it's just an ongoing thing.
Okay.
Mike may have some information about open doors and some of the opportunities that with the census and some statistics that we've been experiencing.
Councilwoman, I was on the phone earlier with the Homeless Coalition. They do a census count in as many areas as they can get into. And that census count is rising. Over last year, it went from fifty-nine to a hundred, a hundred and five individuals that they counted. And they, they told me that that's not very scientific and that there are some areas they can't get into so far. We're working on getting access to some of those additional areas. But on the positive side, they have HUD money coming this year, an increase in the HUD money that they use for purchasing or giving people money to get into a shelter. And they've, they'll get about a dozen more additional, it'll include keeping all the ones that they have and added another additional twelve. But even though that's good, I mean, that's twelve out of a hundred and some odd. So that's making a dent. But we haven't, we're seeing the, we're seeing, this is a national program. It's an Internet, you know, all over the country. And we're trying to keep up with it. Part of, part of that is finding out exactly what the situation is. And our friend Bob sitting in the front row there is gonna, I'm sure, say something to you earlier about his, his investigation too. He's sensing the same thing. The number, numbers are rising, and Homeless Coalition says that the majority of the people that they interviewed are not from here.
Correct. So everybody's coming to the meeting tonight, right?
Right.
Answer any questions from residents? All right. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. McGilvery?
I've got a couple of things, Mr. President, but with your permission, I'd like to echo what's already been said about the condolences for Chief Miller's wife. I'd like to make a motion that at the closing of our meeting today, that in honor of Chief Miller and Ms. Von Dell Miller, we close our meeting.
All right. Anything else, Mr. McGilvery?
Couple of things.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, with the assistance of Public Works and Director Bell, we now have a handicap accessible entrance into the Margaret Sherry Playground, which has been utilized a lot since it's been there. Been there about a week or two, I think. And that's really enhancing that playground, which is what we're trying to work on to get it up to speed. And in turn, as you very well know, the walking track has been in need of repair. And with the assistance of supervisor Nathan Barrett in Harrison County, that project is, is in the movement to be taking place. And, because it's in need of repair. And the drainage also is a major issue, which they're going to handle that too. And I can't thank them enough for that. Of course, again, with Mr. Barrett and the Harrison County, the Montevista paving of the roads taking place. And so that's just been a great improvement out there. One question that I did have, the contractors for the grass cutting that we've been talking about for months, are we any further into that?
We do. We've got some express folks that, I think there's about eight, well, Billy Ray is here, but we got about eight or ten contract employees that are working under their direction. But some of the law and service folks, I'm not sure exactly where they were with the end of cruising and those things. But we do have, I think, eight contract folks that are, you know, working within Public Works and those.
So that's in play now?
Yeah, that's, that's still in play.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavin?
I got a few things. I also like to start off with my condolences to Chief Miller and his family. I can't imagine the pain, you know, he's feeling, but I hope he also knows the love that we have for him, his entire family, and certainly our condolences. Start out with cruising the coast. We just fell a little under a hundred rooms short, I mean, a hundred cars short of registered cars. The latest update, or the previous update that we thought was final was ninety-nine fifty, but there was eleven additional cars that they missed. And so they've added that to the tally. So we fell just under a hundred cars. So I think that's amazing. The weather was great. I'm gonna say this about our first responders and Biloxi Police Department. I know there's a lot of criticism out there on social media, but there were more than just a few incidents that require some of the tactics that we take to ensure public safety, specifically the cones that we put out and when we need to switch to the lanes. That's discretionary by the police department. And they gotta make that decision. But there were several needs to get to people with ambulances, and there were wrecks that needed to get to. And that certainly helps in public safety. With that being said, I would like to request the number of citations that we had this year versus last year and the year before, because it was up last year. And if I can get specifics on the type of violations, I'd appreciate that summary whenever you get a chance. If you could provide that, I would just appreciate it. The other thing was food trucks. And I know there was an entity that didn't normally go through the special events. They're not required to. But, but our ordinance that we adopted in these special events requires that food trucks be two-hundred-and-fifty feet away from any existing restaurant. And that's just, you know, out of courtesy of those restaurant operators. I'm not saying anything, anyone did anything purposely wrong. We may kind of look at it, and they may have been within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. But I think there's also, there's already been a dialogue established to ensure that, that in the future, that if we have food trucks, they're in a specific area, two-hundred-and-fifty feet away, or they're individually two-hundred-and-fifty feet away. And I'll just leave it there. Let's see, what else we got? There was a zoning request, I've noticed, that's being published on the corner of Cedar Lake and Brody Road. Director, can you just give me a, I plan on being at the Planning Commission, but can you just give me an overview of that? And you don't have to go into deep detail, but I just want a kind of an overview as I get prepared.
Well, there's, there's not really a lot of detail to go into. The property owner has made a request to change the zoning on that property from LB to CB, which is limited business, to community business, which is a much more intensive zone. There is no project proposed there. My guess is, and I haven't had a conversation with her, but I've listened to some things, is that she's probably just trying to up the zoning on it to give it a greater market value.
Director, just for the record, what is the primary difference of what businesses could go into limited versus CB?
Limited is what we used to refer to as professional business. It allows, like, lawyers' offices, professional offices, those kind of things, minimal residential there. But when you get into CB, which is our tourism and entertainment zoning, it opens the door for bars, nightclubs, and some other things. Just based on the location, I would think that probably one of the reasons it might be looked at as being rezoned would be like for a convenience store with gas sales. I mean, at that location, that just seems to be, I've not heard that from anybody. We haven't received an application from anyone yet.
Okay. Thank you. And these next two questions, I guess, be more for engineering. The Jam Lane ditch, or what may be a retention or detention pond. And there's been some concerns about citizens that it's not being maintained, whatever that waterway is, and it may be breeding mosquitoes and that sort of thing. Director, you have any update, or has anybody done an assessment yet of that?
I do not have an update on that for you, but I will have you one by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay. And then the next thing, Hickman Road. Of course, we've paved Hickman and Audubon and Skeet Hunt, and it's beautiful to see those new roads. And people are really excited. And we got an owner that is now building a home out there, and he put in an application, assuming that he could tie into some utilities. There are some utilities around the corner. He is willing, if he can get the necessary approvals, to tie into those utilities. Do you have anything?
Yeah. I haven't looked at how close the utilities are to him yet. We do have some utilities that are close by there. So I don't foresee there being any issue him tying in. He may have to run a little bit, or we may have to extend a service down to him. But I don't foresee any issues with that.
Okay. Can you follow that a little bit and just give me an update? He's expecting some feedback from me if he hasn't gotten it already, but I haven't heard if he's received any new information. Thank you, Director. And then the last thing, this could be Public Works or somebody look into it, and we got a little bit of time. But as Mardi Gras season approaches, and I know it's a little late this year, and the parade routes, we need to look at some of the trees that may be, the limbs may be low, that those floats can't get under. There may be a couple of trucks that are pretty significant in size that may preclude some of these floats that may go down this parade route. Just asking the administration if they make sure that they talk to these crews that are parading and make sure, whatever we can do to get them under those limbs safely, that we take appropriate action. I don't need any response. I'm just kind of putting that in your lap a little bit. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, sir. Just a few things. Just a reminder, trunk or treat at Eagle Point Park is coming Saturday, October nineteenth, at six o'clock. Hopefully, everybody can come out. It's growing every year. It's getting bigger and bigger. We'd love to see everybody come out, businesses, individuals. They'll have a contest for the first, third place, or best. Hopefully, everybody will come out. You can get the paperwork to fill out. You just have to fill the registration form through Park Deck or through Ward Seven. I have a Ward Seven scheduled, number fourteenth, at the Wool Market City Center. It'll be at five thirty. I'll send out some reminders prior to that. And I know that, I think, had all gotten an email as well. So hopefully, everybody can attend. Grass cutting, I've gotten some complaints recently. I know grass is slowing down, growing hopefully. And I'm still getting some complaints regarding grass in the ditches. I know Public Works has been busy, obviously, with cruising the coast and some other things. But hopefully, the seven or eight employees you were talking about, Mayor, hopefully, they can make their way up to Wool Market at some point as well. And lastly, I'm just, but just curious, the route, I know that's in MDOT, but is there, if we wanted to get an update on the project itself, maybe somewhat of a, part of a complete update, is that something possible that we could get? Or, or who could talk to about, it seemed like a long time, and it's just sitting there. And I'm getting complaints daily about that.
Councilman Shoemaker, because we may be meeting with MDOT on Thursday afternoon, and that's definitely the status we'll try and get for you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I'd like to offer also my condolences to Chief Miller and his family. I know it's a difficult time for them. Mr. Creel, you don't need to, don't need to get up, but if you would, could you get me a count on the number of short-term rentals? I know there was a renewal process for permits, and usually that's in September, I think. But I'm looking for the total number of short-term rentals that are currently permitted, and then the number of those that are in RM twenty or thirty zones that require the conditional use. Right. Thank you. We don't have a fiscal year twenty-three audit yet, do we? Hopefully, hopefully it'll be here before, and I know it's not on your plate, somebody else. We have to wait to get it. But hopefully, it'll be here before fiscal year twenty-five. Thank you. And the last thing is, there's a ditch, a drainage ditch, that runs east and west, under Churchill Avenue, and south on Pennzoil Park. I don't know if there's a critter, or whether it's just leaves and branches with, with all the wind and all the leaves falling. But that water is barely moving. So it's building up in that concrete drainage ditch there to the east in Bay Vista. And it's going to be the section between Churchill and Hampton Lane. And it's probably need a couple of folks down there. You can't get equipment in there. So I think it's just going to be going with a few rakes and shovels and just clear it out. Public Works had cleared some of the foliage, some of the elephant ears and everything, on the Churchill Avenue ditch that runs north and south. But really, it's between Churchill and Hampton Lane that's got to be cleaned. And folks are worried because of the mosquitoes as well. With that, that concludes my report. And we'll, yes, sir, Mr. Lawrence?
I'd like to follow up on this. Twenty-twenty-three audit, we probably should have had that by June or July of last this year. So what is the problem? It takes about four or five months to get this done, and yet they always give it to us a year later. So we haven't even received a twenty-twenty-three audit, and it looks like it's not even close to getting it now. So there seems to be a problem. Either we need to change company, or just quit doing audits, because they're not doing us any good anyway.
Let me, let me respond to that.
Somebody to follow up on that. So why are we not getting these audits on time like they should be?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
ABL, it indicated there's a couple of program tests that they're ongoing with right, right this very moment. So I'm expecting it shortly. But there was some additional testing to take place. And I read an email today, and I'll forward that to everyone. But hopefully, within weeks. And then, you know, with that in mind, the twenty-four, FY24 is still targeting for March. So that's, I've been preaching that to them. So once with this rock and roll and the additional testing, there was some additional program testing that we needed to do.
At this point, we're pretty much at the mercy of the accounting firm.
That's it.
Nothing you can do to speed it. They're going to run these tests and then make whatever revisions, I would assume, final revisions, and then we get the copy to look at, at least a draft. All right. Thank you.
I'll send you the email for distribution of what the last status was. And that was as of today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Now we'll move to citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to forty-five minutes for comments from citizens. Each individual will have up to three minutes to speak. When you're recognized, if you wish to speak, come up to the table, sign in, and the clerk, there's a digital clock over here. When your three minutes are up, Carrie, you'll hear that sound. And that means your time has expired, and we'll move to the next speaker. With that having been said, is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Anybody on? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Hi, Mandy. Mandy Hornsby. Thank you, Mandy.
Yes, it's Mandy Hornsby, Historic Administrator at Community Development. I just wanted to come and invite everyone, the council, the mayor's office, the citizens, to the Eighteenth Annual Old Biloxi Cemetery Tour. We have our first tour set up on Sunday, the twentieth, from two to five. And then also Tuesday evening, October twenty-second, from five to seven. This year's theme is artists and craftsmen. So we got some great portrayals this year. We have Mr. Glavin's father this year is one of our portrayals. We also have Mrs. Gillich's nephew, or not nephew, cousin, Mr. Jalanovich. We also have Pleasant Reed, Joe Moran, William Woodward, which, you know, we have one of his pieces here in the council office as well. So it's always a great time. Parking's available at the Elks Lodge and on Irish Hill. We also will have refreshments, and it's on your own. You don't have to follow a certain pattern. You can go and just see whichever portrayals you want as quickly, or as many or as few as you like. So we hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hornsby. Anybody else on my right, your left? Okay, we'll move to the other side of the room. Anybody on my left, your right? Mr.
When I started this whole mission with the Broadwater property, the parties that be, let me know that this is exactly what would happen. People would get worn out, and it would end. And they'd go back to where they are. We were at a point last night where we were outside with neighbors. I'm not an expert, but I heard gunshots. We called the police. They responded quickly. They went in there for a minute or two, and as far as I'm concerned, they left. Indication was, there's no way to really totally get in. Where I, in my opinion, should have been there for hours. But it makes the neighbors feel like, are we making this up? Or are we just figuring this is another day at the beach? So I think you've tried everything. I'm not here to blame whoever it is. It's the city's fault. It's everyone's fault. It's California's fault for sending people here. This problem is gonna get a lot worse for Biloxi. And a lot of building is going on in West Biloxi. And I think if you let somebody own that big a piece of land, who is dreaming that a casino's gonna come there, when if you broke that land up, you have developers who would build homes on there right now. There's twenty years worth of people going to the bathroom behind neighbors' houses that ain't cleaned up. Whether you need the Health Department, the EPA, wherever you need to go in there, get in there and clean it up. Get a bulldozer, I don't care what happened twenty years ago, and run it through there so a policeman can take his cruiser through there. Something. You can't just sit here and have people wait for the proper time to build. It's not all the landowner's fault. I'm just saying that there's, from what I see of it, the people who came out cruising, what I see other people doing, there's people who want to move here. They really do. And there's land that people want to develop, that we want them developing their land. But the people who own that land ain't them. There's no casino coming to that property. It ain't happening. So all I'm saying is, what do I have to do next? I don't know. You, you can't blame the police department, but they got a big raise. Stuff is going on. raise. Stuff is going on. It's not our fault. We're losing our head of steam. We had a whole bunch of good things going on, and now all of a sudden, what? What exactly is the answer? It's not the mission. They're telling us who they're going to lend in, and who, how much money they're getting. God bless them. We're not getting any money. We're not getting anything. Uh, I don't understand. So it doesn't seem like, it seems to me the first step is you all should get some boots on and go down there with the police and see what's in that woods. Address the problem, or it's going to get to the point where somebody's going to get hurt. But they're already getting hurt, but it's not visiting guests. I hate to be the one to come up here and always have to do this, because I love Biloxi. And bless you, Chief Miller. We love you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to address the council? Anybody in the very back row? All right. Citizens' comments is closed. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12 pertaining to special events.
I'll entertain a motion for this first reading.
I'll move it.
Mr. Glavine, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Guines. Again, this is a first reading. Thank you. If the clerk will read the next item, item B, please.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 14 Parks and Recreation.
I'll move that one.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
A second by Mr. Glavine. Thank you, gentlemen. Again, this is a first reading. If the clerk will read item C.
Ordinance to amend Section 13148, consuming alcoholic beverages or possessing open container containing any alcoholic beverages in certain places.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
By Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Guines. Thank you, gentlemen. That brings us, let's see, that was item C. I'm sorry. If the clerk would read item D.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 14 pertaining to municipal facilities.
So move.
Is a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
Come on, Glavine.
Is a second by Mr. McGilvery. Again, this was a first reading. We'll now move to item E. If the clerk would read item E, please.
Ordinance to amend Section 16.5 pertaining to storm water management ordinance.
All right. The motion was by Mr. Glavine, and the second was by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine.
I moved it. Jerry, you want to give us a little background on this?
From time to time, uh, DEQ sends a representative down here to review our ordinances and our actions, very similar to what FEMA does. And although this looks like a lot of changes to this ordinance, it all revolves around one thing. Uh, there is language in the current ordinance that gives the mayor the latitude to reduce the 100-year flood design, drainage design, to a lesser amount. And, uh, that is language that, uh, DEQ said could not be in there if we want to get the, the full value of, uh, their annual check that they do. So basically, what we're doing, we're removing the language that provides that latitude. That's all it is. It looks like a lot, but everything revolves around that. Any project that comes to the city has to be designed to the 100-year, um, flood or storm water rating instead of the 50 or the 25-year.
So, so my question to that, we, we are giving up our authority because they're holding a stick over our head that it's going to have consequences if we allow the mayor to still have that discretion.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Peter, is that challengeable, or is that the law? I'm sure y'all looked into this, but should we give it up? I mean, there, there's no recourse. Should we give up our authority to do that?
Well, we, we've challenged the state before and done well, but, um, I'll be frank, it's, I've not really looked at the impact of this and where it stands as far as what they've requested and what they're asking, and what they've done to other cities, and what's the impact, you know, long-term and short-term.
So after discussion, I'd, I'd ask the council, maybe we need to table it. There's no timetable or anything like that, and allow counsel to look into it a little further after discussion.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, uh, Mr. Guines?
None.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion. We, uh, tabled this subject to call, to allow counsel to, uh, look into it and see if, uh, this is the way we need to go to relinquish the mayor's, uh, authority, uh, to reduce any, uh, floodplain requirements.
So is a motion to table this matter subject to call. Is there a second?
I second it.
That's Mr. Lawrence. All right. Is there any, just thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Is there any discussion? Uh, Mr. Lawrence, any comments? If not, I'll open it up to the rest of the council. Apparently none. Any other comments from the council? All right, we'll call for the question. Uh, this is a motion, uh, and second to table this matter subject to call. All in favor, please state your name and your vote. Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Schumaker, yes.
All right. Thank you, lady and gentleman. All right. That brings us, uh, to the next item. It's a resolution, item F. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution appointing Deborah Barris Ward 1 representative to the Biloxi Tree Committee.
I'll entertain a motion.
Is this, uh, is that Ward 1?
Yes, it is Ward 1.
Okay, I, uh, I'll move it for discussion.
All right. So, Mr. Lawrence, there's a motion for Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? I'll, I'll second it for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
My question is to follow up. Two ladies volunteered to be on the, this committee, and yet I never heard nothing about them. Did anybody ever talk to them too, or we just ignored both of them? Now, this lady here, I don't know where the name come from, Deborah Barris, but I mean, I had two ladies that volunteered for this, turned the names in to the mayor, and yet with no response. So why we did not pick either one of them, and why we took this one? I need an answer to that. Did somebody talk to those two ladies that volunteered at that time?
I did not talk to anyone. Let me respond to that. Again, it was my choice, and in general, like, where she lives, and, and the participation of her and her husband, uh, that was the appropriate pick, and it was my, uh, pick for this, uh, particular position. She'll be, she'll be a great tree committee member.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
They're not handling the other two the right way. So I think that was wrong. We do it there. You didn't respond back to either one of them.
Well, I'd be glad to talk to you about, in, in detail about that.
You keep saying it's your call, and I don't make it right, just since your call. I mean, those ladies volunteered their time, and we ignored. So it's hard for me to support somebody who didn't take care of the first two.
Well, I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
No, that's enough right there to make.
Okeydoke. I, I have no comments. Any comments from council members?
None.
All right. We'll call for the question. All in favor, or, excuse me, if you will, state your name and your vote, please. Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, nay.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, no.
Glavine, yea.
Schumaker, yes.
All right. So the appointment is approved on a 5-2 vote for the clerk. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
By Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. There's been a motion and a second. Um, any question on any of the items? We'll start with Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence, any question about the consent agenda items?
Yes, the first one is A. On this media group, 2,500 is a lot. What do we get for that 2,500? Is advertising in a magazine is $2,500? That's A, the first one.
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence wants to know, what do we get for the 2,500?
Ad in, in a magazine that runs throughout, uh, the year.
Did you hear that, Mr. Lawrence?
No, I did not.
It's a, it's an ad in a magazine that runs throughout the year.
It's an ad in a magazine that runs throughout the year.
Is this a monthly magazine, or is it once a year?
I think it's monthly.
That's a lot of money, 2,500 for advertising.
If I may, Newcomers Guide, been along, it's been around a long, long, long time. It's designed for, just as it, uh, implies, people, new residents that are moving into the area, and it just gives them a wealth of information of, on our city, and why should they relocate, you know, in our area. So I, I, I don't have a big problem with it. It is a good sum of money, but I'm, I'm very familiar with this particular guide.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah. I'd say I have had, uh, L, this is Division Street. Is this thing going to cost us $3 million dollars for, for finish with this, uh, Division Street project?
This is item L. It's the reclassification of expenses incurred in connection with, uh, 321 Division Street.
It, it's already been spent, and we just reclassified it to be, be, uh, a part of the bond that we borrowed it for. Yeah.
All right. So this is no new money, Mr. Lawrence. Uh, from what the mayor said, these are expenses being reclassified, um...
Reclassifying the what?
That, that effect is going to free the general fund.
Are they free?
Police already paid.
Doubt it.
Originally, the purchases were issued against the Police Department budget, and these expenses or purchases are now being reclassified to Project 1118, which is 321 Division Street. So, so the expenses are already on the books. It's just the source, uh, the payment of those expenses.
That effect will free general ledger fund balance, but those items needed to take place in order to get the move from Crawford Street to the new building.
Okay. So that's, it's no, no new expenditures. It's just a reclassification from the Police Department budget and, uh, to Project 1118, Mr. Lawrence. Any other items?
And on that N, N, regarding, uh, legal expenses, what does that cost us more money also?
No, these are, these are expenses that have already been incurred, and we've started reclassifying the legal expenses related to eminent domain to, uh, to provide for tracking because of the, um, overall POPS ferry extension project. It doesn't change the budget. It doesn't change the legal department's budget. This was just to, again, reclassify things that have already been paid.
So what I was going to say, we, uh, we allow 20 million, 780,000. So it's inside that 20 million, 780,000, or just additional money?
I'm not sure it's really reimbursable anyway, because it's legal expense, but the, um, uh, it allows for the tracking, which they want to show, and I think we can, we can use it as part of our match.
And on the P, the, the Harrison County is going to help, uh, what they do with the walking track, repaving it?
Repaving.
Harrison County, the Morgan Cherry walking track.
Just resurfacing the track.
Okay. Here comes Sherry.
What do you do to a water track?
Ms. Bell's coming up, Mr. Lawrence.
It's actually a concrete, um, track, and some of the, um, pieces are starting to break apart. So, and he's just going to go in there and reform and re, um, pour the concrete to where it'll be safe.
Some roots and everything on trees had some issues there.
Yeah.
When you say he, you're talking about?
Nathan Barrett, Harrison County Supervisors.
Right.
His, um, team.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, any other items?
That's actually good that Nathan's helping to do that. That's a good thing. That's, that's good to hear that.
Good man.
Any other items?
Another one I didn't quite understand, what this method, S, where we are accepting a tract of land from, who is that KJ's GM, what does that mean? Accepting a tract of land from this group.
This is item S.
Yes. All right. This is, there's about seven acres that are south of the, um, the Oak subdivision and near the Camp Wilkes Road area, and there is a lift station, uh, near the roadway where the city has, uh, a portion of the land the city doesn't use is about three tenths of an acre. And, and so as part of his plat, we're going to receive a third of an acre in exchange for three one-hundredths of an acre. And Harrison County Utility Authority, I think, has already approved the swamp as well for a new easement to connect to the lift station. So, uh, it's essentially, we're giving up a sliver of land and receiving a piece of land that's about 10 times as big. And it, it will allow, I think, four, uh, new, uh, residential lots in the area. Uh, they may all be waterfront lots, so we're expecting some, some larger houses there.
Okay. And the last one is on V, is the Nikkei Brothers. My question is always the same. Have they kept up with all the stuff they supposed to be fixing on people's property before they move on? How many other things do we have open still for Nikkei Brothers?
Gives them the time.
In that area?
Well, you want to address this as an extension of time based on conditions that have been, uh, videoed and allows them to correct it?
Mr. Rhodes coming up, uh, Mr. Lawrence, to answer, help answer your question.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council. Uh, Councilman Lawrence, your question was related to the change order that extends Nikkei's contract on the St. Michael's project for an additional 34 days. The, um, this work is, uh, related, they had four rain days, which affected their construction, and it's also related to CSX permitting issues. Uh, there is a substantial amount of repair work that the contractor has to do. Um, and there are numerous service requests for things such as fencing and a little bit cracked driveways, things like that, that they need to address. If they don't complete the work by November 20th, then, uh, if it warrants additional time, we will look at that and address it with the administration. Otherwise, the contract gives provisions for entering into liquidated damages.
So November 20th is like the cutoff day?
As of this meeting, yes, sir. Unless there is something of some significance that would merit additional time.
Let me jump into and say, as these things were identified and inspected, they came back and, and, uh, re-videoed, and they need to repair, and then re-video that after X amount of days. So the things may pop up, even though they may seem to be corrected. Isn't that right?
Well... Yes, sir. They, the videos that we've been asking this contractor for, uh, quite some time, they finally got it into us, and it shows number of, uh, repairs that they must make, uh, so far. They've been efforting on some of them. Others, they have not had the staffing or the contractors available to do the work, so November 20th seems like a pretty hard deadline.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
One, one last thing, the Walron and the mayor, I'd like to know how many projects they had finished, but the other thing, they don't have the staffing. That's not our problem. They get paid big time to do this stuff. They don't have the staffing. That's their problem.
Yes, sir.
If we got to do something about that, then the mayor needs to do that, because I know y'all meet constantly about these things, that they told me finish it up. that they supposed to be finishing up. So mayor, you going to stay on top of this?
Yes.
He said yes.
He said yes.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
I'm not going to stay doing it. You're not going to do it, and I'll stay on top of it then. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rhodey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery?
I have two, Mr. President. On the P, resolution from Margaret Sherry, a little clarification on that. I thought I mentioned it in my comments, but I spoke to Supervisor Barrett myself. Not only will they do the resurfacing, they're going to replace the drainage, which apparently is what's been the major issue out there, pushing that concrete slab up. I'm not an engineer, but when I walked out, it was Director Bell. We saw several areas where the drainage was an issue. They're going to do that as well at no expense to the city of Biloxi. The board of supervisors is going to handle that total project. And on V, I have the same questions as Councilman Lawrence does. Mr. Walt, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
How many extensions? What happens in November, the date? I don't see it on my notes here, but we're going to be back in the same conversation, maybe in November. What happens then? What do we do?
If there's no, if there's no, if the contractor cannot provide any reasonable request why they believe they may be due additional time, then we enter into, the contract allows for liquidated damages, which means we start imposing LDs of $3,500 a day, not as a penalty, but as a means to cover the additional costs for extending contract services with our Neil Schaefer inspectors.
And if I understand what you mentioned a second ago, with staffing issue was an issue with them as well?
We have not seen the contractor have sufficient amount of crews out there to address the issues that have been revealed in the videos. Videos of the sewer primarily that need to be repaired. And then we have the issues with the service requests typically replacing fencing or damaged fencing, replacing those, maybe some minor cracks in some driveways that were poured, but we're just not seeing it. And we've got pretty good, a really good documentation because we got inspectors out there every day, and they take down notes of who's there and who's not and what activities are being worked on.
I don't want to give anyone the impression that they're getting paid for doing nothing. Because we get paid for doing contracts, item by item. The time is the key thing. Time is money, and that's how liquidated damages come in because there's no billing going on unless they deliver, you know, linear foot by linear foot or per ton. And again, Walt is correcting it, you know, we expect crews to be working during a time period. Anyway, this 34 days extension, you know, given that we have extraordinary things like rain days and some of these other things that beyond our control and their control. So I think it's a proper thing to do to extend 34 days with the, you know, with the LDs hanging out there if these repairs are not corrected in those number of days.
I'm new on the board, and just let me ask my question. What happens if the council doesn't agree to the extension? What happens then?
You know, liquidated damages could apply, but, you know, there are reasons. CSX as well as some other things beyond everyone's control.
Well, the CSX, Councilman, it's a good question. This is, the extension that we're asking for isn't related to the lack of crews being out there. It's related to CSX permitting issues. Not to get too much into the weeds, but they changed their design standards after they approved our permit based on previous design standards. So it caused an extensive delay in getting the contractor to be able to perform some of his work. And then they have some additional work within the CSX right-of-way. They haven't been able to get flaggers from CSX. Because of the Hurricane Helene, all their crews are shifted over to the southeast. So this extension request, similar to the last one, are tied primarily to CSX permitting issues. But if we don't see any activity before November 20th within the right-of-way, whether it's a CSX issue or Nicky's contractor issue, I'm going to recommend we just de-scope that work and put it into a new contract with somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. McGlavine.
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Shoemaker?
I don't have anything either.
All right, thank you. And I have nothing. All, we'll call for the question, and then we'll come back to see if there are any exceptions from council members. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please state your name and your vote.
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yes.
Shoemaker, yes.
Shoemaker, yes, thank you. Now we'll go to exceptions. Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm voting against A, L, and V. A, L, and V.
A, L, D. I have none.
All right, Mr. Guines has none. Ms. Newman, any exceptions? None. Mr. McGilvery?
I vote against V.
I have no exceptions. Mr. Glavine?
I'm against V.
Mr. Shoemaker, any exceptions?
Shoemaker, no exceptions.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to code enforcement issues. All right, Mr. Creel, if you would, we have a number of items. And so far, the track record is that most of them have been resolved. The percentages are going up. Let's hope our luck holds today. You're on.
Item A, John Disbrow, 386 Lee Street. That case has been resolved. Item B, Kurt Lucely, 692 Michelle Drive. That case has been resolved. Item C, Addis Wynn, 285 Laurel Court. This property is still in violation.
All right, is there anybody here to address the issue at 285 Laurel Court, Addis Wynn? Is anybody here to speak on this matter?
Could I ask you a question? Has she been contacted?
She has, yes. And this case does include the storage container that's on the property.
Any other questions from the council?
Could we give 30 days? I'll try to contact.
We have no objection, if that's what you want.
I'll try to contact.
There's a motion for extension of 30 days by Mr. Guines.
I'll second it.
And a second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? All in favor of the 30-day extension? Please state your name and your vote.
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
Okay, so that's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to item D.
Hewin and Zion Wynn, 360 Lee Street. That case has been resolved. Item E, Jared Russo, 366 Main Street. That case has been resolved. Item F, Samar LLC, 251 Lemieux Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anybody here on behalf of Samar LLC to speak to this matter of 251 Lemieux Street? Is there?
Pictures Director.
Sir?
Pictures.
That's the, um. That's the pictures.
No one, there being no one to speak on the matter, this hearing is closed. That brings us to item G, Mr. Creel.
Chan Nochtan, 317 Lee Street. That property is still in violation.
All right, is Chan Nochtan or anyone representing Chan Nochtan available or here to speak on the matter of 317 Lee Street? There being no one, this matter is closed. This hearing is closed. Item H?
Wilmington Savings Fund Society, 1624 Lewis Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item I, Cynthia Davis Estate, 288 Fayard Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Cynthia Davis Estate on the matter of 288 Fayard Street? There being no one to speak to this matter?
Let me ask a question real quick.
Excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Guines.
Since we gave an extension on September 3rd, we did give an extension.
We did. We were, the extension was requested based on the fact that we had made contact with one of the heirs, and they assured us that it would be cleaned up, that the grass would be cut, the truck would be removed. Nothing's been done.
Nothing happened, yeah, thank you.
All right.
There being no one to speak on this matter, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion. By Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Rhodey is making his way to the microphone.
All right, council, some good news. Currently, MEMA has 1.12 million in the Mississippi PA website for us. It's in what they call step three of five. It's been in there for eight days. So once they approve that, then it goes obviously into step four, and it usually takes the 10 to 15 calendar days to reach our accounts. So that's 1.12 million.
All right, so that's pretty much the fight blown coming.
Yes, sir.
All I have to do is approve it, correct?
Yeah, we just need, MEMA, their governor's authorized representative with MEMA to approve it. It goes into their step four of five. And like I said, it takes 10 to 15 calendar days then to reach our city accounts to reimburse the city.
Is anything else behind that wall?
Not yet. They are reviewing. We have actually quite an extensive number of invoices and pay apps on tonight's docket, which are all approved. A little over 647, close to 648,000. They're reviewing those for reimbursement also. So we should have a pretty decent return when they get complete with their reviews. Right now, a burn rate between the two projects is roughly 5,000 to 700,000. A lot of that's made up of some work over in the BEA project, the adjacent project.
Appreciate it, and always staying on top of it. That's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other comments regarding the routine agenda? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda as presented? State your name and your vote, Mr. Lawrence.
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. There's a motion by Mr. McGilvery, second by us all on the council to close this council meeting in memory of Von Dell Miller. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes. Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, October 22nd at 1:30. Thank you.
Good job. You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And don't forget the Ward 3 meeting tonight.
The mayor forgot to acknowledge all the birthdays for tomorrow.